Good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for Monday, April 9th. Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Duracet?
Here.
Councilmember Rhino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Here.
Both Mayor Viera and Councilmember Lainer are absent this evening.
Okay. If we could, please stand for the invocation by Chris Grigson of the Valley Christian Center, and then the pledge of allegiance.
God in heaven, we thank you for this time that we can gather together to bless this city, Lord God, and I pray for our city council that you would give them wisdom, and I pray that we would all look for the greater good of this community. We thank you for all you've done, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have two presentations tonight. One is, the first one be proclamation declaring April 8th through the 14th as National Dispatchers' Week in Series. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is crucial to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatchers of the Series Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Series declares the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be National Dispatchers' Week in Series, in honor of the men and women who diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Do we have Mark Anderson, dispatch supervisor?
So I have prepared something to say to you guys. I want to thank you, the council, for taking time to recognize our police dispatchers during National Public Safety Communicators' Week. I say this with great pride that I am proud of the eight dispatchers that make our communications center. They are all hard-working individuals who take pride in their job by providing excellent service to the citizens of this great city. Dispatchers are the unsung heroes of public safety. They are a vital link between the community and public safety resources. I'd also like to share some information with you that paints a picture of what the workload is like in our dispatch center. Since April of 2017, our dispatchers have answered 98,898 emergency and non-emergency phone calls. On average, each phone call lasts 86.1 seconds long, totaling 141,918 minutes that we are on the phone. Of these phone calls, they have entered 36,513 calls for service. So if you get the chance next time you get to speak to a dispatcher, a simple thank you for your service really goes a long way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our second proclamation is declaring April 8th through the 14th, 2018, as Stanislaus County Library Week in Series. Proclamation reads as, whereas reading and literacy and the freedom to explore are cornerstones of a free and democratic society, and whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity, and whereas libraries offer 24/7 access to library services through online resources such as eBooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, music and movies, online language instructions, and research databases, and whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. Therefore, to be resolved that the City, Series City Council does hereby ununanimously proclaim April 8th through the 14th, 2018, Library Week, and encourages everyone to visit their local library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available, provided through a voter-approved 1-8 cent sales tax dedicated to the support of libraries. So do we have Ann Marie Montgomery?
Thank you so much for recognizing the Series Library during National Library Week. I just wanted to give you some statistics about our Series Library. Every month, the Series Library averages about five programs a week for children, and mostly children, some adults. These programs include early literacy, family story times, imaginative playgroup events, crafts, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics programs, family puzzle nights, computer classes, and a book club. Last month, almost 500 children attended events at the Series Library. In February alone, we had some 2,505 internet logins on our free wireless and on our free public computers. I really wanted to share this story that a customer shared with us. Last week, a woman came up, she's a regular, she comes in all the time and uses our computers, and she said, "Today is the culmination of all my efforts. I'm graduating from the MJC nursing program. I've been coming in and using your computers for years now to reach this goal. I could never have made it without your help. The library has changed my life." I get choked up. It is an awesome place to work, it is a valuable resource in the community, and I would love it if any of you came by at any time. All of our information is available online at stanlibrary.org, and we have printed calendars of all of the great events we have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. While this, moving on, while the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matter under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council of taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless otherwise it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on an agenda item subject to five minutes provision. Do I have anybody in the public that would like to address the city council?
Dave Pratt of Series. I see riding my bike, all the rocks and stuff on road and road and stuff. How's that work for you? You know, the thing is, I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the county when they did their roads out where I ride, is why? You know, you made it harder to see the bad spots. You don't fix the bad spots, and then also, also, I think, you really should have gone through with asphalt, fix the bad spots, and then do the rocks. But the bad spots are still there, and they're just going to get worse. I see, because I see that when I do my bike ride, when I go out in the countryside. Another thing, until the rocks finally get settled, I have to pay attention, the cars, speeding cars, that's flipping rocks at me. You know, I can see one, you're trying to save money, fix the roads, but you don't do a good job of it. County didn't do a good job of it, and you guys aren't. Thank you.
Don Donaldson. We know this sign, and I got in trouble. I usually open at 8:00 and got on there, and I had to, I was running a business without a license. So Reverend Randy Clark, he retired over here at Southern Baptist Church, and now he's in Himmick, and he sent me a sign. I'm letting you people know, and you let, notice, thank you for noticing this notice. You're nothing it has been noted, and it has been reported to the authorities. It's a joke. So if anybody comes by my house and they see this in my window, it's a joke, okay? And this right here is something, a couple of weeks ago, I presented somebody with a uniform for their child that played basketball 35 years ago for the program, and he scored, let me see, he scored eight points in the first one, they took him out because it was runaway, and then he scored eight points in the third quarter, and nine points in the fourth. Jamie Smith, 35 years ago. So I think his mom is here, and I'm going to give her this book, okay? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Brandt. I am here on behalf of the Series Street Fair Parade. I'd like to invite everyone to come down and watch the parade on May the 5th. It starts at 10:00. The parade will be going up Moffett, make a right on Whitmore, and go down Whitmore to Foster Freeze. We really, really need you to come down, bring your chairs, a blanket, whatever, because we have a lot of entries, but we don't have a lot of people coming to watch the parade, and it's really an awesome parade. So I have some flyers here that I'm going to put out on the table so that you can see what all's going on. I also have an information sheet here as to what the route's going to be. And also, I have a form here that if anyone wants to have a float, the water tower's going to have a float, and I believe our Centennial Committee's going to have a float. So if you want to have a float, I've got the application for that, too. But I would like to invite and encourage everyone to come out to the parade. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, I'll bring everything back to the city council. We have no appointments to boards or commissions. Is anybody on the city council would like to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing none. Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for a special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Does anybody on the city council want to pull any of the consent calendar items? Seeing none? Anybody in the public? Seeing none? I'll bring it back to the council.
Move to approve items 1 through 6.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Can I have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Duracet?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes 302.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, so no public hearing, no new business. We have two items up for discussion. The first one is the Office of City Treasurer election discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Klein, members of the city council. This evening, discussion item regarding the treasure. As you know, we have an elected treasurer who's been in place for many years, and that is in accordance with the government code for California that requires cities to have either an elected or appointed treasurer. Similar action was taken by the city council years ago to move the city clerk from an elected position to an appointed position. So a number of cities are moving in that direction. As referenced in Stafford Port, there's about 157 of the 480 cities that currently utilize an elected treasurer. So kind of a confluence of things that have happened in the election side of things over the past couple of years. The move to district elections in 2015, coupled with the change to even-year elections in 2017, where we moved from odd to even, has now put us to where we need to make this decision on the future of the treasurer position. So as we mentioned, the current treasurer as elected in 2015 is a four-year term that will expire at the end of November of 2019. So we have a couple of options, and then the two that the council, were presented to council this evening would be, one, to extend the existing term of the existing elected treasurer, move that from 2019 to 2020, and then make a decision in 2020, or would be to ask the voters the question, because the only way we can change from elected to appointed is to have the voters of our population make that determination of moving from an elected to an appointed position. So if we were to put that on the ballot for November of 2018, likely it would be structured so that it would change at the end of 2019, so it would have no change to the existing incumbent in that role, and then that change would go forward from 2020 moving on. As a practical matter, the duties of the treasurer as specified in state law are pretty broad, and for the most part, our finance director handles most of those duties and seeks really just oversight per se from the elected treasurer on a kind of case-by-case basis, and most smaller to medium cities handle it that way. There are some other options in terms of committees and that type of thing, but for the size of our city and the diversity of duties for the treasurer, at this point, we would recommend those just being folded into the job description for the treasurer, but we would have plenty of time to make that determination over the course of the next year if the electorate were to approve in November of 18. So I have spoken to the incumbent, Mr. Harry Herbert, talked to him last week and asked his thoughts on the matter. I don't see him in the audience, so I did ask for his permission to speak on his behalf, and he did indicate that he is not willing or is not interested in running for reelection next year when his term is up. I did bounce the idea of moving from elected to appointed. He supported that idea, thought it was a good idea as well. So for this evening, looking for public input as well, council direction of whether we should move forward with either of those two options, and then we would come back. If council were to direct us to move towards making the change from elected to appointed, we'd bring that item back for resolution, and then a consolidation of election, we would do that at the same time sometime in May, so we can get it on the ballot for November of 2018. Available for any questions.
I do have, I do have one question. Historically, have we had multiple people either run for the city treasurer or showed interest in running?
I'd have to dig into the history. I don't believe we've had a lot of interest from my experience, at least the last three that I'm aware of, I believe it was just a single person, and we can get you the records of that, but I don't believe we've had more than one person for a number of years.
Anybody else in the council have a question? I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public have a question or any input on the Office of City Treasurer? I see none, so...
I think it'd be a good idea just to make it an appointed position, because I know back in, well, since you said the last three, that there's only been one person. My only fear is that maybe we can't find somebody to appoint, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it'd be one of those things, obviously, we'd encourage somebody, but I wouldn't be objective to having it be appointed.
And I would agree with that, and I think, I like the idea that we put it on the ballot this year instead of extending it a year since Mr. Herbert was not planning to run again. So why do we, I don't think we should extend his term a year. So my, I would agree with item number one.
Could we find somebody within that timeframe, though, to be able to appoint?
Well, under, if we're doing number one, we wouldn't need to appoint. The, under option number one would be moving this item on the election ballot for 2018. So in November of 2018, we'd be asking the electorate if they would like to move from elected to appointed, and then we would have all of 2019 to basically make the job description change, and the duties of the treasurer would then go from an elected to an appointed position, and likely we would just move those under the job description of the finance director. So we wouldn't have to have a person.
So then he would be appointed for...
One more year.
Well, no, he would, he would term it up, term out at 2019, so January 2020, we would appoint somebody?
No.
It would be the...
You would have the option to do that if you'd like to, but staff recommendation would be to take those duties of the treasurer and roll those into the job description of the finance director.
So we would not have anybody appointed?
Correct. You would not have to appoint anybody under that structure.
So we don't have to have a city treasurer?
Well, the duties of the treasurer are required. It's either appointed or elected. Under the appointed, that appointment can be an existing city employee.
Okay.
Similar to the city clerk.
Councilmember Duracet, it's just like when we moved from the city clerk being an elected position, and then it fell under, it went to the voters, and then it fell under the duties of the city clerk, I mean, our employee, the city clerk.
Correct. The city clerk is appointed by the city manager.
Right.
And in this situation, what a lot of cities have gone to is just rolling those duties under the finance director, because it's a practical matter, they're being handled that way as it is. It's a job description change. We would need to make that completed in 2019.
Right. That sounds good. So the direction, I think, if I understand right, is that we put it on the ballot to eliminate the city treasurer?
As an elected position.
As an elected position, and then after that, it's going to be absorbed within the city.
So we have to wait till the electorate speaks. Once the electorate makes a decision, then we would make the appropriate action. If for some reason the electorate decided not to make the change, then we'd have to revisit this decision about extending the term or doing something differently in 2019. So in essence, we've got to ask the question first, get an answer, and that will determine our next steps. So we'll bring that back for formal action by this council in May or June.
I think we're all fine with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And the second discussion item is cannabis business tax measure discussion. Mr. Wells?
Thank you again, Vice Mayor Klein. So as I mentioned, back in January, we had a conversation with the update of our development agreements related to cannabis and kind of the future of cannabis-related businesses in the city, and an overview of what's happening at the state level. So as the council is well aware and the public's aware, we had chosen the development agreement as the mechanism for our regulation under the ordinance. It was adopted in 2017. That development agreement process, we're very comfortable with, it's worked quite well for us, and it has been used as a model in a lot of other cities. But as we look to the future and what may or may not change in the cannabis world, there is some uncertainty from a legal perspective, since it hasn't ever been tested in a legal, you know, court of law of whether a development agreement is applicable in this situation. We're confident that it does pass the rule of law. However, the courts often have a different opinion, and that's one that the future of our cannabis regulation, we're uncomfortable without having a safety net. So we're recommending, from a staff perspective, that we move forward with a cannabis sales tax to be placed on the November ballot, to be utilized only in the event that our development agreements were found to be invalid and we had to go a different direction. It also gives the council some flexibility in the future if there were other business opportunities that may be more fitting of a sales tax versus the development agreement, that you could move that direction for a specific business. So in essence, it's giving a safety net as well as some flexibility in the future. What we recommend is using a framework similar to what Modesto and other cities have done, where they just put a range on the ballot, so you could tax up to a certain percentage, and then the council by ordinance can set the actual rate at that point in time it's ready to move in that direction. So again, it's a framework for, call it a backstop, that is the provision we're looking for. We would put this item on the November ballot and bring back again for council action. We'd bring it the same time with the treasurer for your direction at the previous item, bring those two items together, solidate that election with the positions that we have open in November, send that to the county clerk for inclusion on the November 2018 ballot. One thing I did forget to mention is, as a sales tax, it can only happen on a general election. So it can only happen, since we moved to even-year elections, it can only happen in 2018. If we don't go this time, we'd have to wait till 2020. So hence why we haven't had this conversation prior, because when we moved our election from 2017 to 2018, there was really no need to talk about it since couldn't have it until 2018 at the earliest. So available for any questions, and look for your direction.
Anybody on the council have a question? I do have one. Doing this, I know we have two retail outlets. How does this, what, how does this affect case manufacturing and the development agreement?
All three of the development agreements are exempt from the sales tax as it currently stands.
No, but if we put this in place and we're forced to do it, how does it affect case manufacturing?
As a sales tax measure, the development agreement exempts all three of those operations from the collection of sales tax. If for some reason legally we were challenged and lost, and those development agreements were no longer in force, then all three of them would be subject to the tax that we'd be putting on the ballot, and that tax, as a case manufacturing, has a component that is manufacturing and distribution, they would be taxed under that regulatory structure at the state level.
So on their distribution part?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just like they are today, they're already taxed at the state level, we would just add our tax to that. Currently, our development agreement is capturing the impacts associated with their activity within our city under the development agreements. It would just shift from the development agreement to a taxing structure. That's again, if only, the only reason we would go that direction if for some reason it was a change in the direction from the council, or our development agreements were found to be legally invalid.
And your wording is going to be like a tax range from 8% to 14%?
Most, most folks are using a range from 2% to 15% or 2% to 10% is the range that's out there currently. Most folks are going somewhere in the 4% to 6% range when they implement it, but for this purposes, to keep it as broad as possible, it, you know, we would bring that back as part of the action, look for council if you have something in mind. You know, there is quite a dialogue at the state level and across the state in terms of how much tax is being levied on this industry, and it's pretty substantial and pretty, pretty heavy, so there is some conversations within the industry of whether that is forcing things into the black market. So we do need to be cognizant of that range and that rate, but I look for your council direction on what a maximum rate would look like, and the Modestos was 10, City of Dixon, I believe, was 15, and it's kind of all over the place. Somewhere between the 10 and 15 range would be, from a staff perspective, we'd be comfortable at the 10% number as a max, but...
Would that put us about where we're at right now? What we're capturing?
We're a little lower than that currently. But yeah, so 10, I think, 10% would give us the flexibility that we would need. I don't think we'd ever need to get there.
Any other questions? I'll open up the public. Any questions on this item? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
I think we should use this as a backstop. I think having Plan B is very important. You know, I think we stepped out, we're front of the lead throughout most cities around, and, you know, I think right now the revenue that we're collecting is very important to our community, it's pretty important to our public service folks, it's pretty important to our general fund, I'm crying out loud. And I think to have this is a very important thing, and I think the staff did an awesome job, because this is something I wasn't aware of, obviously, this week it was, but I would be in support of having this, and I don't think there's a resolution to be made.
No, this is just direction, because we have to bring it back for council action.
Do you have a tax range you're looking at?
I think we wait. I mean, I think 10% is fine for right now, but...
We bring it back for council action, we'll need to specify that.
So we don't have to have that right now.
Okay.
No, I agree that we should have it as a backstop, even though I may not support a dispensary, I still think that we should have it as a backstop.
Okay, so I agree, so... Okay, with that being said, is there any council member referrals that you... I see none. Reports? I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
City manager?
Couple of items to mention. Tomorrow morning, we have the two plus two plus two meeting with the school district tomorrow at 8:00 at the school district headquarters. That will precede the next joint meeting that would occur later this year. Also, the Centennial meeting, Centennial Committee had a great event, but it continued planning the next events. The next event will be centered around the street fair. The Centennial meeting is on April 17th at 5:00 here in the community center. Immediately following that will be the TOT Committee, which continues to meet again for April 17th at 6:00. Also, I want to make reference to the sustainable, groundwater sustainability plan, which is a regional effort that's being led by Turlock Irrigation District and a number of other cities here in the county, working on the sustainability plan. There's a workshop here... There's a workshop here on April 18th at 6:00 to talk about how this will impact the region and the importance of sustainable groundwater practices and creating the plan that is required under state law. Lastly, wanted to respond to Mr. Pratt's comments about roading road. So what is being done on roading road and several of those roads is what's called a cape seal. And so a cape seal is a two-step process. The first part, first part of that process is called a chip seal, where you put oil and rock down, and that provides some stability for the overall roadway, provides a level of minor protection and kind of fixes some of the irregularities. Once that's settled and down and, and some of those loose rocks are gone, they return for the second coat, which is the cape of that, which is a rubberized material that provides some more elasticity and more structural strength to the roadway. It is a maintenance application, and it does extend the life of the roadway at a much cheaper cost than an overlay. Not every roadway is eligible for a cape seal, but for those roads that are in that middle range, those are the ones that get the cape seal. And again, it keeps the cost down and extends the life of the roadway a significant amount, and that helps us to get those Measure L dollars to stretch as far as they possibly can. So very inconvenient for some folks, they don't like the rock as it started, but it's not done yet. The weather caught us a little bit, we didn't expect to have rain in the middle of April, we did, so that pushed that project back a little bit, but they will be returning to complete that roadway that has the chip seal, and you will also see a similar surface for most of the streets that are getting a sorry seal. And so as I mentioned last time, and Darryl mentioned, we are working on the additional projects for the next round of Measure L. And that's everything I have.
Mr. Hallahan?
Okay, Mayor.
Ms. Dean? Mr. Westbrook? Mr. Jordan? Chief Smith? Captain Collins? Ms. McCoy? Mr. Dumas? I see none. I will adjourn the City Council meeting to closed session for conference with labor negotiators.